Good evening and welcome to the Thursday, February 20th, 2025, meeting of the Bloomington Planning Commission. The Planning Commission is made up of seven members. We have five this evening in the chambers, and we have one person who is joining us online. Each member volunteers their time and is a Bloomington resident. Members are appointed by the city council. The Planning Commission is advisory to the city council for most items. The commission makes recommendations and the city council has final decision-making authority. There are certain applications that the Planning Commission can approve or deny on its own, subject to the appeal of the city council. We have two items this evening. Both are study items, so neither will have a public hearing. So for each item, we will have a staff report. The applicant for each item is the staff, so they will answer any questions, and then we will close the meeting. First order of business tonight is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you're able.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First item this evening is a study item, as I mentioned earlier. It is the South Loop District Plan update in our study session number two. Planner Ramler Olson, you have the staff report.
Thank you. Yes, this is another study session. This is the second one to follow up from the one last October, on October 10th. That was a whole group of study sessions in front of various city commissions, and so we're coming back in front of the city council, or Planning Commission and City Council, to give you an update on how the update, or give you an update on how the update is going. Do I need to tap something? There we go. Okay. So the agenda for tonight is just to start off with a brief intro to the South Loop District Plan that was originally adopted in 2012, and then what this project, how it relates to that plan that was originally adopted, or adopted in 2012. A general review of feedback from the first round of study sessions back in October, and then we also did another study session in front of Parks Commission in December. An overview of the proposed outline for the update. We'll get into next steps for this process, and then staff has prepared some questions for you all to consider, and then, you know, we'll leave it open for discussion if, once we went through those questions. So, a brief intro into this update process and to the original plan that was adopted in 2012. So, this is part of the 2024-2025 Planning Commission Work Plan. This is looking at a 13-year-old document whose vision was to transform a suburban area into an urban area and create a suburban, or sustainable district. There are lots of things to the vision, but those were some key points, or some points of emphasis for you all to consider. The scope of work for this update is to work on priority updates, meaning we can't do a full rewrite, and so we have to be strategic in what we choose to update. And so we're going for those revisions that have the greatest impact and carry with it some policy implications. And on top of that, we will be evaluating the implementation plan that was adopted along with that original plan. We're going to update it because a lot of those projects are either obsolete or they've been completed. And then proposing new projects based on city priorities. Wow. Good. All right. So in 2024, specifically October, we engaged various city commissions, creative placemaking, sustainability, Port Authority, and then we worked with Parks in December. And we received a lot of good feedback. We had done a lot of research prior to that, and the feedback we received just augmented that research even more. Some key themes that stood out to staff as we were looking at those study sessions and the feedback we got were Parks in Open Space are a priority for the South Loop District, and so we are going to prioritize that in the update. Commissions and City Council were quick to recognize that there hasn't been a commensurate amount of park and open space development with the added population and the employment growth. And there was also recognition that the trail connections have not gone too much further than what was originally put in place or adopted in 2012. So there's still some trailheads that still need to be constructed. So that's a, that's an issue that the update will be addressing. Another thing that stood out was walkability as a goal for the South Loop. Again, this is about transforming an area from suburban to urban, and so walkability just being a characteristic of that, of that urban transformation, it's important to maintain that and that the development and infrastructure ought to support that goal for walkability. We heard a lot about there not being enough destinations outside the Mall of America in the South Loop, and so, again, this kind of goes hand in hand with the walkability because whatever destinations there are there, they ought to meet the pedestrian at eye level, ground floor, again, making it more of an attractive atmosphere for people to visit or for the residents that are currently there. There was also emphasis on district energy being still something that ought to be considered for the South Loop District. There's, there's a lot of time that has passed, about 13 years. At the time of the original adoption, there was a study that was done that assessed that district energy wasn't feasible at that time, but with, you know, advanced technology and just easier to get things to market, where maybe district energy ought to be reevaluated for the South Loop District. And strengthening connections between the Mall of America and Bloomington Central Station was also a key point of emphasis. There's a lot of, there's a lot of opportunity between those two endpoints in the district, and so how those fill in ought to strengthen the district. So whatever goes there, whatever develops, there's, has been a lot of development, but there's still more opportunities. So looking at those opportunities to really fort, or strengthen that connection. And with that, with that feedback that came about through, again, six different meetings, and even reaching out to stakeholders within the South Loop District, staff has prepared the following outline. It starts out with creative placemaking updates, acknowledging the formation of creative placemaking in, you know, in the, in the wake of the, of the original South Loop District Plan. So there's been a lot of, a lot of work that's taken place within that division. I mean, not only adding staff, but just the work that's been done within the South Loop District. I mean, now they're citywide, but they were primarily focused within the South Loop District. So it's good to take stock of that. What projects have they done? What projects are they proposing to do? They have a strategic plan coming out soon, so it will acknowledge that plan, all that work being done. Looking at building standards, the original plan recommended a sustainable building policy for any development in the district. And as you may be aware, there's state statute that prohibits, or, you know, ultimately prohibits requirements that exceed those of building code. So this will be revised into a sustainable building policy for those projects that receive public funding for their construction. Energy updates is a, is another topic that'll be explored, again, related to the district energy topic that I mentioned in the previous slide. Measuring sustainability, there was a, there was a way to measure sustainability that was used back in 2012. We don't have access to that software anymore, so we want to be able, you know, we want to make sure that that's not impairing consideration of development in the future for the South Loop. So we'll probably be, or we're going to be recommending that that be removed. Ecological land stewardship, this kind of, this recognizes the natural resources that are in the South Loop District and that their protection ought to be of, of top mind as the district continues to develop. So we will be recommending updates, or will be, you know, the update will include recommendations for actions that will strengthen those natural resource protections. Updated clarified development goals, guidance by area. This is in reference to the, just the time that has, that has occurred, the gap between now and when it was originally developed, there's been a lot of shifts in real estate and development and different markets, and we want to take stock of that, reevaluate our, our land use guidance and zoning to make sure that we're, you know, we're, we're, we're current in how we're directing development within the district. And updated Parks in Open Space Framework. This is looking at the, well, I mean, it's pretty much in the title, Parks in Open Space within the district. It involves an update to the framework map that was prepared back in 2012. There's some key differences, but really this is just a more slimmed-down version, or pretty much a slimmed-down version of what the framework map showed back in 2012. This one has a, has a few minor differences. It highlights the Mid-City Bike Way that's proposed to be located along 86th. It recognizes that there's some development opportunities within the South Loop District and for which there should, there, you know, they will include public or park recreation space. So we wanted to make sure to include that on, on this framework map. And then an update to the trailheads that are within the district. There are three that are still under construction, and there are three that have already been completed. And moving on to transportation updates, a reminder that there, Public Works is in attendance, and they can answer some questions if you have any specific concerns about the transportation updates being shown or discussed, proposed to be discussed in the update. So another map was created showing multimodal projects, proposed multimodal projects, a variety of which occur over, or propose to be, to be implemented over the next several or so, several or so years, seven or so years, sorry about that. Although that's, that's in flux too, that's, there are proposed pedestrian crossings and traffic signals, again, to make it more safer for, or make it safer for pedestrians in line of the walkability goals that were talked about on previous slides. So if you have any questions about this, please let me know. And moving on from transportation updates, streetscapes, plazas, and other public spaces, we're going to be including guidance to, 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 for those public spaces that are being proposed. There's one that has not been constructed, but it's, was noted in the original plan back in 2012. The, there are gateway design at 34th and, and American Boulevard. Staff is, you know, we have concerns about how some of the public spaces have taken shape so far, particularly the one at 24th and Lindau. So whatever occurred there, we want to make sure that the guidance is improved so that we create a better gateway feel at 30, 34th and American Boulevard. And that's just one, one example. If there's other public spaces, we want to be able to address those, and that might mean mending the HXR district in the zoning code. And then we'll be providing a water resources update. Stormwater management is a big part of development. It really influences the form of development. So we want to make sure that the guidance that's within the, the plan is something that the, the city is, is advocating for in new development. There's, was some guidance in the old plan that left some developers and staff confused as to how it should be applied, and we just want to clear up that confusion in this update. We have a, in terms of engagement, we do have an active Let's Talk page. It's the External Facing Information Hub, and it allows people to submit questions and for staff to then reply to those questions, and it also acts as a repository for project material. And we've been reaching out to key stakeholders, key stakeholders in the South Loop, and we're keeping them up to date on the progress of this update. So next steps, we'll be holding a similar session as we are right now with City Council at a, at a meeting in March, and then getting your feedback. And City Councils will begin drafting of, drafting the update to be considered at public hearings in April and May. So some questions for you all to consider is, this relates to the, the land use guidance section that's going to be included in the update. So that updated land use guidance, should the city proactively re-guide and re-zone office properties planned for office uses to be more flexible regarding land use? Maybe it could have been worded better, but especially in areas where residential uses are allowed. So this is referring to the office market. It's no secret that office has taken a hit post-pandemic, and there is a lot of areas within the South Loop District that are guided office and zoned for those uses. So in light of that, and to give property owners some, some flexibility on how to, on how to use their property in case they're dealing with office vacancies, could they repurpose it to something else or, or convert their, their property to a different use? And should staff actively, or should the city actively or proactively re-zone and re-guide those properties? Or should we just handle that on a case-by-case basis? We have staff's response and recommendation at the bottom of the slide if you want to refer to that, but otherwise, that's a question I put to you all.
Thank you. Commissioner Cookton.
Thank you, manager. Mr. Ramler Olson, do you have a zoning map we could see of where these office properties are?
Yeah, I mean... Sorry. Oh, whoops. Yes. Chair, Commissioner Cookton, the geometry that is shown here that is Zone C4 is what's being referred to in this question. So that is, is that highway commercial? Sorry, Nick might have helped me with that, but nonetheless, yeah. So you want to pay attention to those parcels that are Zone C4.
Yeah, Chair, if I may, may add to that. Thank you, Tom. The guide plan also is maybe a good indicator there too. Some of the parcels are zoned, or I'm sorry, guided office. So you can see they're in kind of that light purple color. So you can see the properties on the south side of the Mall of America. You can see the properties along Long Meadow Circle, along East Old Chocopee Road. There's the Metro Office Park parcels, and then the hotel site, the Marriott northwest of IKEA. So these are parcels that are currently guided office and are, I believe, for the majority of them, located outside of the airport safety zone. And so residential uses are allowed on those sites. They are subject to height limitations. Technology has improved quite a bit in terms of the acoustics issues in some of the buildings. So I think it's just a question that staff has been wrestling with internally is, given the office market dynamic, should some of these sites, should some of these property owners be approached about the potential of re-guiding and rezoning to really get at that urban redevelopment pattern that the district plan is shooting for?
Thoughts from the commission. I know Commissioner Isa, you're also on, I don't know. You want to just chime in? Commissioner Curry?
Thanks, Chair. Just a quick question also. Can you go back to the other zoning slide? Yeah. What is LX, what does that entail?
Chair Commissioner, that's the Lindau Mixed Use District. And that is taking into account that it's within the airport safety zone, so the uses are, are specialized to that condition. So there's no residential allowed within those, within that particular zoning district.
Okay. So the main focus is the C4 district, I believe you're saying, or?
Correct.
C4 and, okay.
So Chair Commissioner, the, that's C, the area that's Zone C4 north of American, east of 24th, part of that is within that safety zone, so it can't be all, so it would, any sort of rezoning would have to acknowledge that, that it wouldn't, it wouldn't be able, allowed to develop residential in that area.
Commissioner Cookton?
Yeah, thanks, Pam Chair. So kind of just, I'll work around the clock here a little bit, starting top left. That's that hotel site where Doubletree is rebranding it right now. For me, I think that's a good hotel site. I don't know if I'd be inclined to do that, anything there. As I go to the right, that is the runway protection zone, so you can't develop anything there. The sort of right half of that top purple blob there. Metro Office Park, I mean, that certainly could be redeveloped. I might be interested in residential there, although I think that's good commercial and hotel spaces that close to the airport. As we go down now to the bottom right, a lot of that is in the runway protection zone, which is why all those houses were demoed, right? And then sort of the right half of that purple blob is already developed. So I don't think there's really any opportunity with that whole purple blob there. And so then your, your last bit is just south of Mall of America there, where I guess there's like those restaurants and stuff. I think that's excellent hotel properties. I don't know if I'd want to use that up for residential. So I guess it's a bit of a mixed bag here, but for me, the only place I think I would really be interested in having the potential for residential would be where Metro Office Park is.
Any other thoughts? You both raised your hand at the same time. Commissioner Cunningham?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I was going to ask about, I'd never realized that, gosh, I just had it up, Long Meadow Circle, that there were houses that were demoed for the airport safety zone, I guess. Is there any, anything that can be built there, similar to the Lindau Mixed Use? I guess would there be any market demand for utilizing that kind of parcel? Maybe Planner Ramler Olson, any thoughts on that?
Chair Commissioner, I might have to defer, I'm not too familiar with the history other than, you know, what's been stated that those homes were demoed to make way for the airport safety zone. If they're guided C4, there's other non-residential uses that I suppose could go there, but in terms of long, long-range plans for that and the discussions that have taken place regarding that property, I'll have to defer to Plan Manager Johnson.
Yeah, Chair, thank you, and thanks, Tom. So the Long Meadow Circle site, again, yeah, was a series of single-family homes. It was bought up by MAC and then demoed as part of some of the air, you know, air noise mitigation efforts and projects that took place. So the majority of that site actually is located within Safety Zone B. So on the western, I would say 60%, you can't have residential uses in it. But on the eastern 40%, actually, it is outside, located outside of that. And so we haven't had any applications come forward that were formal. And so we haven't had any applications come forward that, uh, were formal and were public. Um, we have had some discussions with that landowner in the past, uh, about, uh, some potential development there that did include some residential uses. Uh, keep in mind too, that residential uses can be developed in C four. It's just they have to maintain minimum levels of non-residential floor area. So I think part of the calculus here is that if you wanted to, uh, create uh, more pure, uh, residential opportunities, uh, without the need to tie it to residential floor area in this area. Uh, the mixed, uh, the mixed use guidance would allow you to do that in a little bit easier fashion. And then you could tailor the zoning to whatever would fit the, the project. I would also note on the south side of the mall, uh, there's a series of office buildings. The city has received some interest in, um, uh, creating some residential development on the south side of Kilibr there. Um, nothing has come forward to fruition. It's been just a couple of inquiries and attempts at, you know, just concept site plans and just, uh, general project characteristics. Um, uh, but you know, that, uh, conversion, uh, there's some older office there that might be a good candidate for a conversion. But, um, these are some of the things that we've heard. Um, as Tom noted, there's been some engagement with key stakeholders. We did meet with the owners of Metro Office Park. Uh, and so, uh, they didn't shut the door to that outcome and I don't, I'm, I want to be hesitant to characterize, uh, their position. Um, uh, but, uh, you know, the office market, it does have challenges. Um, uh, but I think they were just interested in having an ongoing conversation about it. So one of the things to note about this discussion topic is how aggressively, uh, the city should move um, in terms of proactive re-guiding, rezoning, or is it more of stimulate a conversation with those property owners and kind of see, uh, what their plans are? Um, and of course, there's always the case by case, development by development, site by site, uh, type of, uh, privately initiated action that can occur as well. So there's kind of a menu of options there.
Mr. Johnson, if you wouldn't mind, uh, clarifying just quickly. So in C four, residential is allowed, but it has to be in conjunction with some level of other use retail office. Is that correct?
Yeah, Chair, that is correct. Uh, I can pull up what the minimum FAR is, but it's all governed by minimum floor area ratios. In the C four district, uh, you have to maintain a minimum non-residential FAR of 0.2. So effectively 20% uh, of the, the floor area of the project. Um, uh, well, actually, and it's tied to the land area too, but, uh, 20% in effect has to be non-residential. We've had developments come through in the past, as you know, that have sought flexibility to that in order to try and make it work, depending on what that commercial use is. We've also had other projects kind of do PDs with multiple sites to bring forward, uh, commercial uses, um, as part of a project. So there are some creative ways to do it. Um, the last thing I'd note too, is that it also depends on what the guidance of the property is, um, in the comp plan. But office does allow, uh, residential, I believe. It's just a matter of meeting some of these underlying zoning requirements.
I guess given that information, I am more supportive of going down the route of rezoning and being more proactive. I know that the idea here is to have uh, vertical mixed use, which is a great concept. But I think for the parcels in HXR, though that has been somewhat successful. Um, the retail there is still kind of struggling and I would venture that potentially horizontal mixed use might be more successful. So not necessarily in the same building, but, um, sort of spread out. So, uh, for me, that would seem to be, um, flexibility that I think would be enticing if that, if the interest is out there. Commissioner Cookton.
Thanks ma'am Chair. What's the proposal to re-zone it to? So from C four to what?
Uh, Chair Commissioner, I don't know if we, uh, that would be something that we would explore, uh, with the update. We'd be working on that, um, just to, uh, identify those districts that allow more flexibility. Uh, compared to what's currently allowed. So, um, I, I will admit, I apologize, I don't have a district off, off the top of my head. Um, perhaps, uh, uh, Nick Johnson can, can illuminate, um, that answer.
Yep. Thank you, Tom Chair, if I may. Oh, am I turned on here? Okay. Uh, thank you. And, uh, yeah, what I can just add to that is I think that's certainly something we can bring forward in the update. If this is something of interest, I think what we wanted to do first was just test, uh, both the planning commission and city's council's appetite to take this step. And again, there's both, there's more of an aggressive posture. There's more of a, hey, let's check in with all of these property owners and see what their plans are. You wouldn't want to re-zone. Uh, you wouldn't want to re-zone to a zoning district that would not fit the future vision of the property. Um, uh, in addition to being in line with the guidance of the district plan. So HXR certainly could be a candidate depending on their plans. Um, we've had some interest in innovation and technology, uh, depending on who the end user is too. Um, that would not be a residential, uh, project, of course. Um, but I think part of that discussion, and I appreciate the owners of, uh, Metro, uh, engaging with us in that way. And that's part of that discussion is just checking in with folks and, uh, providing the council and the planning commission some options to consider and think about.
Commissioner Cookton.
Thanks ma'am Chair. So again, I know you just said it. So C four does allow residential. If there's 20% floor area racial, floor area ratio that is commercial, is that what it was?
That's correct.
Commissioner Curry.
Thanks Chair. Um, uh, in general, I'd be, I'm definitely supportive of being more proactive. I think all of those, I mean, the metro office, well, I mean, yeah, I think all of those areas could be, I don't see why you, you couldn't have residential at any of them. So, um, and I, you know, I think we all want more, we all want to kind of activate the space. I think that was kind of a, or activate the area. I think that was kind of a, a large topic of discussion last time. And, I mean, I think the best way to do it is to make people, to have, not make people, but have people live there. So, um, yeah, I don't see why not be more proactive about it in all of those areas.
Commissioner Cookton.
Yeah, ma'am Chair. So I'm, uh, just trying to get to the bottom of this. So is the goal here that by getting away from C four and going to say, uh, HXR, that we could build residential without the commercial space? Is that our goal? Cause C four already allows residential. So what is the benefit then of rezoning?
Yeah, that, that's my understanding is that you have a little more flexibility about how the building is laid out. Um, that you wouldn't necessarily be required to have the 20% you might be able to have 10% or you might be able to have.
Right. Because HXR does not require retail space, I believe, right? We just approved a phase of BCS without retail.
Yeah, uh, Chair, Commissioner Cookton, um, I agree with Tom that it, you know, it's incumbent on us to do a little bit more research in terms of what the, what the exact precise trade-offs are of different districts that this could go to. And so that's definitely something and I'll continue to do some research here as we're talking. Uh, but that's definitely something that we can deliver to you in the more formal update, um, as we go. But yeah, uh, I'll, I'll continue here and I'll report back, uh, on, on some of that.
Yeah. So I'm sorry, ma'am Chair. I, I think the way I'm interpreting this question, and I may be misinterpreting it. But the way I'm interpreting this question now is, are we okay with these parcels developing as residential without retail? Cause they can already develop as residential, but they have to have that retail component. And so the way I'm understanding is this, are we okay with them developing as just residential without a retail space? And if I've interpreted that correctly, that's not something I would be okay with.
That's good feedback.
Commissioner Curry.
Thanks Chair. Um, kind of on that same vein, I think, you know, it, it would be good to have, obviously, I think again, going back to the last conversation, I think we really wanted more retail in the HXR district. That hasn't happened. If you're gonna, it seems to me like retail would be something maybe more centralized rather than around the periphery of the area. Um, to make it more accessible to everybody. So I guess in, in that instance, I mean, I do want to see retail too. But in that, you know, in these more peripheral areas, I don't know if that's something that I think is, I think if we required it, it might be an impediment to, uh, actually getting, you know, to promoting development in those, in those districts.
Chair, I'm, I'm sorry, we, we do, there, I believe there's a slide. Ah, there we go. Okay. So, uh, this, I should have brought this slide up today, this conversation. Cause I do talk about some of the major zoning districts that are sp- South Loop specific. So maybe this'll illuminate the conversation, add more depth to it. Sorry about that.
Commissioner Cookton.
Yeah, thanks ma'am Chair. And I think Commissioner Curry brings up a good point that perhaps a concentration of retail is, makes more sense in having it on the periphery. And as I was looking at that map, as he was describing that, I, I think I probably did jump the gun a little bit. And that retail probably would struggle on some of those fringe parcels there. And so not to derail the conversation too much, but maybe it's that we need to take a look at what is zoned. I believe HXR, if we go back to the zoning map. I think where I'm really interested in retail is kind of in the core of Bloomington Central Station where the, the LRT station is. Uh, and we've had a development or two there come forward without retail, which I didn't like. And so if we're talking about proactively rezoning, I think I would be more intrigued to see a rezoning of some of those HXR properties to perhaps C four. High level, something with a retail component to force that upon the development instead of having development without it. But I don't mean to design from the day is here.
Chair, if Commissioner Cookton, if I can add one, uh, thought to that too, is that we're, uh, the discussion is kind of looking at it from, uh, one direction and leading to the residential, but you can actually look at it from the residential and go the other way too. I think one of the values that HXR may present is that it has the residential requirement. So if the city proactively wanted to take that step, if we identified a site that we felt, uh, that residential, uh, really must be a component of this, either because of its proximity to the 34th and American area or other value that it's adding to the South Loop District in general, just in terms of activating, as Commissioner Curry said. Um, you know, re-guiding and rezoning to HXR, uh, would, 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 uh, require the developer to bring some residential to the table as part of a future project or redevelopment. So, um, flexibility is one way to look at it. Uh, but another way to look at it also is that it is a, a tool for the city to use to, uh, to dictate where residential uses should be created as part of any future redevelopment.
Commissioner Cookton.
Thanks ma'am Chair. Uh, so just ask the question, cause I know not all my fellow commissioners would be in favor of this. But could an outcome of this study be to look at the HXR zone and possibly modify that zone to require retail?
Oh, yeah, Chair Commissioner, yes, that could certainly be an outcome of this update is to, um, reexamine HXR. I mean, uh, uh, in the outline, we were, we already talked about re-examining HXR in terms of its public space requirements. So that would also fall in line as part of that review as well.
Yeah. And my, my add to that, uh, Chair and Commissioner Cookton would be is that, um, taking a step like that, while I think is very much in line with the district plan goals, uh, also would present less flexibility. I mean, I just want to be clear about that, um, on that end. As you can see, and I mean, just for those, just a point of context about the HXR district. So it was certainly initially created for the BCS development, just so everyone's aware of that. Uh, a few residential projects have since been successfully developed under the HXR standards. Uh, the Arter, um, uh, is the most recent, uh, one of that. But a few along the, the river bluff there on the east side of the district.
Commissioner Cookton.
Does that, Mr., ma'am Chair, uh, does that zone exist anywhere else or is it just right here?
Uh, Chair Commissioner, uh, Cookton, it's only in, uh, the South Loop District. Yep, only in this location.
Any other thoughts before we move on to the next question? Does that give you enough clarity? Clarity?
I might have to look back at the tape. Oh, sorry Chair. Yeah, I might have to look back at the tape, but I, yes, I'm, I'm sure there's direction in there. I will, I will go with that. Do we need to blow on it? What's going on?
Sorry, Tom.
This is awesome.
Like you're working now or?
I don't know. There we go. Twirled the batteries. Yeah, apologies. Technical issues. Okay. So on to the next question. Should the city adopt minimum structure height requirements in portions or all of the South Loop District? Or should the city rely on minimum floor area ratio to guide the intensity and form of development in South Loop? Again, uh, staff's response, our recommendations below that. Um, we don't feel a, uh, minimum, uh, heights is necessary to be added on to the required FAR. So, um, giving developers that flexibility for best construction while meeting FAR and broader goals of the South Loop District plan is, is key in our, in our view.
Thoughts? Commissioner Curry.
Thanks Chair. Yeah, I'd agree with that. I think that makes sense.
I also agree with that. I think, um, though the idea of additional height there is attractive. I think in terms of penciling out those projects might be more difficult. Commissioner Govern.
I agree as well, um, with both of you.
Commissioner Cunningham.
I also agree. We're trying to do a, everybody weigh in.
Commissioner Cookton.
I'm not sure I agree. This is, this was the toughest one for me because it's my opinion that what particularly Bloomington Central Station was supposed to be is not what it has become. And in some ways I think the, that whatever the truck has left the station or whatever the idiom is. But I'll, I'll say a couple of things. I might consider requiring six stories. Because six or a five on a podium is what you can build wood out of. You can't build wood taller than five stories on top of a podium. And the last BCS development we saw come forward was four stories. And to me, that was just a disappointment. Um, I think that building should be taller. I think that's an under utilization and not the best and highest land use by allowing four stories, uh, in the heart of Bloomington Central Station. So at the very least, I wish we could have at least six stories or five stories of wood on whatever height podium you want to put there. And then I think, I don't know, in general, I recognize why we wouldn't do this and it's reasonably sensible. But we do have two massive lots that are on 494 that have a world of potential where there's currently thousands of parked cars and has been longer than I've been alive. And there's still a lot of potential there. Would we consider those two, what I believe are currently just two parcels, they'll be split up eventually? Would we consider some sort of height minimum on those two parcels where we still have a chance to get um, some very vertical development along the highway, which we have a lot of in Bloomington. And I, you know, I'm not in a developer, but I believe it could support it. Particularly if we get a water park or other major developments at the mall, we could see some pretty significant hotel development. And so going short is, is great for developers because it's cheaper and you get your money back faster. And so there's obviously a risk if we require a taller building, that it would be less attractive to, less attractive to developers because, uh, building a tall building takes longer to get your money back. But would the market support it if we required it? I don't know the answer to that.
Commissioner Curry.
Thanks Chair. Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Cookton and you definitely would like to see more density than what I think we've seen. At least I've seen in the time I've been here. I don't know. I don't know if, uh, I don't know the best way to go about that though, because you do want to support development. But without it, you know, being so restrictive or, uh, inflexible that nobody can do anything. So. Yeah, I don't know. So, yeah, I don't know, I don't know what the answer is.
Commissioner Cookton.
I'll also add that going more vertical gives you the opportunity to create more green space. You look at the most recent phases of Bloomington Central Station, there's hardly any green space, because it's relatively flat, and it's all building. So, there's little tiny pockets and a pool, but you don't get, you don't have the opportunity for green space, because your whole site is a building.
Commissioner Curry.
Thanks Chair, totally off topic now, but when is the last time that we did a, I don't know if you do a market study, to see, you know, what, uh, what vacancy rates are like, or what rental rates are like, and what rates are needed to support that kind of development? I think something like that would be helpful in understanding what we should even be talking about, to some extent. Because I just fear, I, you know, I kind of look at it, and it's like, we just, I, to me, it seems like we're going to end up with a newer version of Lyndale Avenue in Bloomington Central Station. You know, with four or five story apartment buildings that are sprawling, maybe, hopefully, maybe a couple of office buildings or something, and retail if it, if it gets built. So, um, it's just, I think it's a lot easier to understand what we should be guiding towards if we know what the market, you know, what the market would actually support.
Commissioner Cookton, and then, uh, I thought I saw a slide that you had in your extra slides about, uh, at least, uh, vacancy of office?
Uh, Chair Commissioners, yes, um, let's see if I can find it. Caution that this was, um, estimates I received back, I think in September, I mean, it hasn't been too terribly long, but the real estate market is highly dynamic, and so, um, vacancies are, you know, hopefully this isn't too outdated, and, you know, it accurately captures the vacancies. Um, I did note in the outline, uh, some caution with the vacancy estimates, um, sometimes it's hard to get that information from, uh, property owners. They're very covetous of that information, almost proprietary in their eyes, so, uh, it's really, it's, it's, it's better to think of these as estimates than, you know, firm, uh, S, or, uh, from declarations of what the vacancy rate actually is. So, um, I believe I, I listed it as twenty, twenty-five percent, I think I mentioned, as a vacancy rate. And, um, but yeah, and that was specific to the South Loop, overall, we have a citywide vacancy rate in office buildings at seventeen percent. So, it's higher in the South Loop, but again, word of caution, those numbers aren't the most reliable.
And just for clarification, you said twenty-five percent, not five percent, like on the screen?
Yes, so, oh, oh whoops, yeah, no, actually, I don't know, oh my lord, did I? I might have misstated that, actually, in the staff, in the staff outline.
Chair Albrecht, Tom, while you, uh?
Yeah, never mind, uh, yeah, anyways, I will recheck those numbers, so maybe, I apologize, don't you rely on what I have on the screen. So, I will double check those numbers, I, I do have them available, but, um, unfortunately, I'm just not confident in them right now.
Chair Albrecht, what I was going to add is just a Commissioner Curry's question about how often does the city do market studies? So, one of the benefits of having, uh, internal assessing services is certainly our city assessors try and stay as attuned as they possibly can, uh, to the market dynamics and all the different, uh, land uses or sectors across the city. And that's where, uh, uh, they've been supportive of the planning team and, uh, providing some of these numbers, uh, is just their best, uh, estimate right now. Um, in terms of when the city has done, taken the step of doing formal market studies, obviously, there's a, usually typically a pretty significant expense, uh, to ordering that from, uh, a private service. The last one that I'm aware of, uh, is more related to just general, uh, housing market conditions in Bloomington and surrounding communities, and that was related to supporting the opportunity housing ordinance. It in effect was a essential legal step to establishing what the, um, affordability requirements, uh, were, were to be, uh, setting the level of the minimum expectation. And so, I think that was done by Maxfield, that's the last one that I'm aware of, that the, the city did, uh, as a formal market study. Other than that, typically, community development staff is rallying with our assessing division staff and trying to get, uh, as up to date information as they can from, uh, from that source.
Commissioner Curry, and then, I promise, Commissioner Cookton.
Thanks Chair, yeah, just to close that off, so, yeah, I think, I mean, in general, I think there's, we have to deal with the dynamic of airplanes flying overhead all day. So, you know, I just don't know if there's going to be the market support to have that kind of, and, you know, that kind of development, or people are going to be willing to pay the rental rates, I think, more specifically for apartments, you know, for higher, for taller apartments than for office. Yeah, office is a long ways off from probably getting to the point where you want to build a bunch of office right now, so, um, I mean, I think it's probably just worth the city's time to see if they can get a couple, uh, a couple apartment developers or, or apartment and office experts in to talk with them and see what the reality of it even is, because it's just probably not worth our time guiding it that way, and trying to have an idea that's just not going to be supported by the market.
Commissioner Cookton.
Thanks ma'am Chair, and I'm glad Commissioner Curry brought up Lyndale, and I think that's why I have such a hard time with this, is because, you're right, I mean, what is the difference between what we're doing here and what we're doing on Lyndale? It's exactly the same thing with fancier zoning names. And, um, I think that's why it's been such a disappointment for me, like, the original vision of Bloomington Central Station and South Loop was going to be the third downtown. It's connected to Light Rail, it's next to the mall, it's right next to the airport, it was going to be the third downtown, and I don't know, I don't know if it's, we blew it as a city, or the market just didn't want it, but like, I think the dream of that is gone, I mean, it's just a lot of six-story wood buildings now, and it looks like kind of every other neighborhood. And then you, you're backed up against the idea that it's really hard to get to, it's surrounded by a river on two sides and a freeway on the other side. And so, like, I just don't know if the neighborhood is ever going to blossom. And I don't know if that's because we should have zoned it this way in the first place and required fifteen-story buildings, I mean, you look at the old sketches of what this neighborhood was going to be, and it's all buildings that look like Health Partners and Reflections. And we didn't get that, and obviously, it's either because the market didn't want it, or the market wanted to do a lower cost option, I'm not sure which, which it is. And so, like, I struggle with, am I the last line of defense that says, we still have a chance, and we, we can do this, and why don't we think boldly? Because, like, when I think about the past, I get a little upset with, with why didn't those people think more boldly? Why didn't they put their foot down and say, no, we, we are going to hold out, and we are going to hold ourselves to high standards? And am I just the next person in line that's not going to hold us to a high standard, and we'll get the same development that happens in Burnsville and Eden Prairie and everywhere else? Or should I make a difficult decision and say, no, we're going to, maybe it takes longer and takes more work, but we're going to hold ourselves to very high standards in this pocket of Bloomington? Lyndale, totally happy with six-story wood buildings, all day long, but should I be more protective of this neighborhood, this spot, and say, no, we're going to take a little bit longer, take our time, and do it to be something special, instead of just like what everything else is?
Commissioner Curry.
Thanks Chair, sorry, one, one thought for your, your hope. I think in, again, I, I go back, I mentioned in the last meeting, Reston, Virginia, like, place I've visited a few times for work, and I think it's basically what we're, what we've been aiming for, or what was intended from twenty, twenty-twelve. I think it's just a, a factor of proportions, like, if you get enough people in there, there's going to be a reason for retail outside of Mall of America. So, you know, I don't think you give up on the retail and the whole concept of an activated urban area, but I think we have to be realistic about how much could be supported, and just doing it in the right way, so that, uh, so that it is somewhat concentrated and does have, you know, an urban feel to it, versus being just kind of developed sporadically around, around the district. So, um, I think there's definitely still hope for what you're putting out there, and reason to, to push for it. I think we just have to be realistic about how much we can expect of commercial in particular. And if it is, you know, if it is four or five-story office, or four or five-story apartment buildings, at least if it's, you know, done in, maybe the way, or developed around the way that, um, would drive activation of at least like three blocks or of retail, then at least there's something that would come from it eventually, so.
Chair Albrecht, if I can provide one more staff, uh, perspective about a couple of things about the discussion, and, um, I, I don't intend to, I think you've all kind of voiced your perspective on it, so thanks for the feedback, we appreciate that, we'll certainly report that to the council. Uh, another things, a couple of other things that we've been talking about internally as a staff, um, uh, and it's somewhat surprising in some ways, but some of the projects in BCS, and I know this has been shared before, so I don't mean to repeat it in a negative way, um, but some of the projects that have been developed in BCS actually have resulted in more floor area ratio or development intensity, I mean, that's just one measure. Um, and but residential density as well, so I think the form i- is a, is an important thing to talk about, I think the intensity piece is also an important thing to talk about. One other piece that we've talked about, uh, to a degree, is also, um, building, uh, or bringing the buildings directly right up to the street. Tom mentioned that the guiding principles of the district plan are to transform the district from suburban to urban. Uh, you can construct a tower, uh, but if it's set back far from, uh, the neighborhood that it's interacting with, to an ask to, in one, uh, aspect, that also i- is not fully achieving a more urban, uh, divi- uh, vision. And so, I think that the details are important, um, on that. The last thing I'll say, and I, I don't want to, and I know Tom has a good extra slide on this, but we did, just as a point of clarification, we did check with Port Authority staff about the, uh, cost implications of requiring towers. Um, and I think what he found from the Port Authority staff, and he has a slide on it, but it's typically in a range between an increase in cost of twenty to forty percent of, uh, project construction costs. So, um, that's a significant thing, uh, I, I appreciate the thoughts around, uh, waiting for the right project, I, I sincerely do. Anecdotally, and I'm sure Tom knows this even better than me, is that, uh, I'm not seeing a lot of, uh, towers being built in the Twin Cities right now in today's development environment. Um, and I know St. Paul is a little bit of a different case because of, uh, some of the other policies they have adopted, but, you know, a lot of development happening in Ford Bridge, uh, in, in Highland. And, uh, I'm not seeing a lot of tall, uh, it's a lot of five over one, uh, in that, uh, development as well. Finally, I know I've spoken too much here maybe, but, uh, I think one of the last things to think about is just subsidy. I mean, the city can effectuate any development outcome if it wants to, if it's willing to put X amount of dollars on the table, and that certainly is the, the key sticking point there. So, thanks for the opportunity.
Actually, the Ford site is a really interesting parallel between, uh, to this, namely because I think they recently, as of this week, I think, had a really tough discussion, discussion about density, uh, at that site. They wanted to pull back on density, I believe, so, um, and the city said, no, we want to see a level of, uh, intensity. My question is, at what point do then, does the developer say, well, then I'm out? So, that would, that's only my, that's my concern, um, I think, but I, I definitely think that the difference between the South Loop and maybe the Ford site is that they started with green space. It, it started with a significant amount of green space, and, uh, so, I, I don't know, I, I go back and forth on whether, whether it's build it and they will come, or, you know, require it, and hopefully, we hope for the best.
Chair.
Commissioner Cookton.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, just, would there be consideration of requiring five over one?
I think that's very reasonable. I think it's very reasonable.
And Chair, if I can speak to that, just for clarification's sake, so we can, uh, communicate your precise, uh, feedback to the council, are you referring to residential projects only? Are you referring to all, uh, kind of subsequent development? I mean, SIC is a good example, where a portion of their development obviously is not, uh, would not align with that structure height, uh, the office is four stories in height. Um, uh, and, uh, you know, thinking about innovation and technology, there's some spaces guided, uh, for that use, which are in the airport safety zones. That's another example where some of those structural, those structure height requirements might present a barrier, sorry, Tom.
No, no, I, I took the guidance referring to HXR is specifically not so much the IT district or the LX district, is that, is that? I'm sorry, this is probably more of illumination of the question that, or in addition to the question that Nick had.
Commissioner Cookton, I know you have something to say.
Well, I worked on the SIC building, so I don't know if I can really talk about it, um, but the idea of, okay, so there's that bluff site where the residential neighborhood used to be, or whatever, and now something's going to go there, maybe it's some IT campus, maybe not, who knows what's going to go there. Would I be okay with that being a one-story building? Not really, I don't know, I, I don't know if I would limit that to residential. I don't think our mayor would be very happy to, to hear that, I mean, there's a big push for semiconductor stuff, and you're not going to get a six-story building, a semiconductor production.
And if I may, uh, Chair Albrecht and Commissioner Cookton, if I may, of course, um, staff isn't suggesting to, uh, back away from our minimum expectations around floor area ratio that current, that currently, um, is the, uh, is the main mechanism or tool that we have to, uh, require a significant amount of, uh, development intensity, which typically results in, uh, multiple stories.
Multiple, but we just got a four, and I wasn't, wasn't pleased with that. For sure for SIC, or for, sorry, for residential, I'm, I'm there for s- six, um. I don't know about non-residential, I'm somewhat in favor of, of it still. And, and it does get a little tricky, because like floor, floor plate, floor to floor is taller for office, so whatever SIC is at four stories for their office building would be like the same height as a six-story residential, so there's some nuance there. But I still think I'm in favor of, of that.
So maybe a height of whatever that would be, rather than floor.
Sixty feet, or whatever that would be? I know that pretty much automatically rules out some sort of IT campus.
Commissioner Cunningham.
Could, potential wording be where, you know, sixty feet, where, where, well, we shouldn't say appropriate, because it's too subjective, but e- essentially allowing a tech campus to be in the airport, you know, runway, emergency flight path, that it can't go, I, I don't work for the MAC, I, I'm not sure what the limit is, but I, I'm assuming, I've applied for enough FAA permits in my career. I know you can't go very high around an airport, at least around the flight path. So, if anyone knows what the build height limit is in those areas, I would appreciate that feedback, I guess.
Commissioner Cookton.
Some of us do work for MAC. It's, it's, that's a difficult question, I believe it's like angular and things, and so, I, the city does have maps for that type of thing, I'm sure that could be provided to, but it's not quite so simple. But the key is that you can't have residential anywhere in that cone.
So, Chair Albrecht, Tom and I did do, just, and it varies from site to site, one of the reasons that you can't just give a blanket answer for the South Loop District is that it varies from site to site, but we did test, uh, one site in South Loop, and, you know, you can get up to, uh, close to a hundred feet in structure height. Um, the, the crane is another issue during construction, so they typically have to seek some type of, uh, variance or allowance from FAA, and they have to provide a lot of documentation around that it's a no hazard, uh, it's called. So, um, I, I couldn't give you an idea of anecdote, like how much added cost some of that analysis is, and some of the acoustic stuff that we require around the airport, but, um, you know, it does add some cost.
Commissioner Cunningham.
Thank you Chair, um, I guess with that information, I'm more in favor of Commissioner Cookton's path, I think a, a minimum height would be would be, would be good to further the goal of the South Loop District. I guess maybe we'll be back, well, we won't be here in 13 years, but maybe lending manager Johnson will be hearing the exact opposite, saying, okay, nothing happened. We should lower this. But I, I, I think if we're trying to push for the goal of density, a minimum building height might be a, a positive for the building, for the city. Thanks.
And there would be a possibility that they could apply for a variance.
Chair, that's correct. They'd have to meet certain statutory criteria of, you know, demonstrating a, not a hardship. Can't remember what the phrase is now. I've been out of
Practical difficulty.
Practical difficulty. They'd have to demonstrate that they're subjected to practical difficulty in, in meeting the code requirement.
Then I'm, I'm in favor of it.
I would anticipate PD flexibility as being a more likely
Sure.
mechanism to make such a request, but yes, you can make it through a variance. Tom's correct.
And Chair, yeah, so the, where was it? The, that, that 5%, I'm sorry, there's just a lot of numbers and I must have been confused. I do have it correct in the outline, so it's actually 28% is what the office vacancy is estimated at. But again, word of caution, not the most reliable number, so take that however you may. In fact, it might be a little bit higher because there's some vacancy within sub leases as well. So it actually might be a higher number in terms of office vacancy. So just wanted to provide that correction. Don't pay attention to the 5% on the screen.
Commissioner Cookedin.
Mr. Ramon Olson, can we go back to a map of some kind?
Sure.
I think we should be a little bit more clear if we're serious about a six story thing. Talking about the entire South Loop here or what do we, what do we say?
I would be in favor of the entire South Loop unless they had some sort of PD level of flexibility, which would mean that they would have to have some sort of significant reason behind why they wouldn't be looking at the height that we would be hoping for. Unless it's in an airport zone, of course. Commissioner Curry.
Thanks, thanks Chair. The Mall of America, I think is like three, right? Or i- if there's a second phase of that planned, they're, they're not going to go six stories, I don't think, right?
I think we were leaning towards 60 feet.
Oh, 60.
Or whatever that number is, but.
Yeah, I suppose Mall of America probably is 60.
Yeah, they're fine.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, Chair and Commissioners, the last thing I'd say about it is keep in mind that ultimately zoning is going to be the tool that sets these parameters and requirements. So, you know, in terms of your level of precision within the South Loop District Plan update, I think you have a little bit of flexibility and fungibility there. I think where the rubber will meet the road is if the city updates its zoning code to reflect that. And we certainly can present this discussion and nuances to the city council and get their feedback and report back to you on what their perspective was as well.
Do we feel ready to move on to the next question?
I'll just
Commissioner Cookedin.
Say one more thing. So, I mean, I like that we've gone in the direction of 60 feet. After all the discussion, just to have it on the record of what my position would be, I would be in favor of an even higher height limitation selectively, particularly around Bloomington Central Station and where the two park and rides are. And some of those key parcels there, I would be in favor of an even higher height minimum.
All right.
So the third question for tonight to consider, does the planning commission want to provide any guidance for public spaces in the South Loop? I alluded to the quasi-public spaces at 24th and Lindau. They're at the northeast and southeast corner of that intersection near the, the, the two hotels that have been in development and the, the restaurant right there. My God, all these names are escaping me right now. I apologize for that. But nonetheless, so we've been observing that public space and we just want to put that before you, that before another gateway or public space intersection is developed at 34th and American. What sort of guidance should we include in the update to make sure that it improves upon the conditions that exist at 24th and Lindau?
Commissioner Cookedin.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Mr. Ramon Olson, can you just be a little more specific and don't be afraid to be blunt? Like what don't we like about it at 24th and?
Chair, Commissioner, you're asking me to be, me to be blunt. This is still being broadcasted, so I'm going to. So it's not a very hospitable environment. It's, it doesn't really encourage staying or, you know, relaxing or meandering in, in that public space. It's next to a 10 lane road to its west. It has free rights. If you're familiar with free rights, those are basically channelized drive lanes that allow movement of the vehicle pretty much unimpeded. And so it's very fast. You have a lot of cars kind of zooming in front of those public spaces. It's loud. It's not really well shaded. There are uses on, near it that don't complement it. They don't provide the all day activity that may be residential or I suppose the restaurant is, is good to have there because then they, you know, people do use that, that public space. Or again, like that space at the southeast intersection as, you know, they have a dining patio, but it's a very small portion of it. I don't see it occupied in my observation. I haven't done a formal analysis of its occupancy. So this is purely anecdotal, but it just, it, from my perspective and that it, it's just very inhospitable to what a public space ought to be and to encourage people to stay and relax. So the conditions at 34th and American kind of reflect the same in that American Boulevard is, is pretty wide. That intersection is fairly huge. I mean, in excess of, I mean, I would say 120 feet in both directions. So the crossing distances across those roads to access, you know, public spaces that I, at the corners of that intersection are very demanding and really challenge the concept of, of a public space that is hard to access by the public. And then, you know, adding on to that is again, the, the traffic and the, the noise and just the, the conditions there don't really lend itself to a very hospitable public space. So that's my bluntness. Now, Grant, that, those are all, I, you know, in the eye of the beholder, if you will. But just from my observations and, you know, my own professional opinion, they don't really lend themselves to be very good public spaces.
Chair, if I can just add my credence to, I think Tom's observation is that I am similarly aligned with him, that I just see those spaces being for, as I would consider them underutilized.
There's a, there's an opportunity for them to improve if they got rid of the free rights and they narrowed the road and actually created a gateway feel at the entrance of Lindau from 24th. I haven't, I haven't sketched out an idea of what that might look like. But again, it's about just about contending with the, the, the noise from traffic and the busyness on the road as opposed to the busyness on the sidewalk. There is no, there's no one using that sidewalk. It's not really well trodden by pedestrians. Instead, it's mainly dominated by vehicles in the right of way in front of it. So that's an issue that a public space design at 34th American would also have to deal with.
Commissioner Cookedin.
Thanks, Madam Chair. So a lot of the things you described there were, you know, the high, high intensity of the activity there because the roads are so wide and it's just really unfriendly to pedestrians. And so it brings up a related question I have that's not specific to this question you have on the slide. But, you know, Old Chocopey Road, and then it turns into 34th Avenue is huge. It's three to four lanes in each direction. I don't think there's any justification for the road being that wide with the development that has actually occurred there. Is there any consideration of putting that road on a diet and losing some lanes?
Chair Commissioner, I would have to defer to transportation staff that are in attendance and if they can speak to that. I don't know if that's actually been, that, that's a plan being considered for 34th.
Chair Commissioner, it depends on what your goal of development is for the district. The, the road sizes are based on what the proposed development intensity is. And I know we do not currently see that. But on the previous planning projections, those roads are slightly overdesigned and they're tremendously overdesigned if you look at the existing conditions. So it's a function of what kind of density do you anticipate as you indicate you want more density in higher buildings? And with higher buildings comes more people and more different transportation needs. So it's kind of cart and horse. So yes, some of those roads, especially Old Chocopey, as you go around the curve, that is currently wider than it needs to be at the moment. And probably will be wider than it needs to be with the current projections. So we don't have a plan to narrow that road at the moment. But would certainly, as that road gets reconstructed in the future, would look at it at that opportunity in time.
Commissioner Curry.
Thanks, Chair. Well, I'm glad that Commissioner Cookedin brought up streets before I did because I feel like I'm always bringing up streets. I, I mean, I think the streets are honestly kind of the, one of the bigger issues with the outcome of the South Loop District in general, just because again, the blocks are so large. So just leading to apartment buildings that are, can take up more space and, and be probably less dense overall where they're not going up to the street necessarily along the, the entire street length. But I didn't even realize there was a public space at 24th and Lindau. Like I had to really look hard to find it there. So I don't even know if I'd call that a public space because it seems pretty small. So should public spaces be designed on a site by site basis? I mean, sure. We should figure out something a lot, a lot different than what we've got right now. That's it.
Commissioner Cookedin.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I think the way I'm looking at that 24th and Lindau thing though, what more could you do? Honestly, I mean, you're at, based on where it is, that's what you were going to get. I mean, I'm not a landscape designer, but yeah, 24th Avenue is a 10, 10 lane road. And that one probably isn't too overdesigned because you got all the people leaving the mall. I, I don't know. I mean, I think that's just the nature of what this neighborhood is. That site is really active. It's hard to park there. It's, that is a very active site on Lindau and 24th.
Chair Commissioner, if I may, I guess in an alternative way to look at that is, should those be open spaces? Or should we maximize the potential of those sites and allow development there? So recognizing that these are very loud, huge intersections that aren't hospitable to public spaces. Do we want to reconsider guidance of creating these gateways at intersections instead of favoring just allowing development to fill those spaces? Where you would, you would get more use out of it or utility out of it than an actual public space. And those public spaces can go anywhere. They don't necessarily have to, have to be focused at an intersection. There are public space requirements for HXR and we would consider that with any development application. So it's about where those public spaces should go. Or maybe I should refer to them as open spaces because again, those are not technically public. Those are on private property, but they are open to the public to, to, to use. So I just put that before you as well.
Commissioner Curry.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, I think there's no need to put them on the exterior to become a gateway to the area. I think you'd get more utilization or value out of actually putting a building there because they're not very friendly for people to be at. I think something more on the interior where there's less traffic. Or hopefully less traffic, smaller roads would be more enticing for people to go to and utilize. So, and that again, is one of the things that, you know, should, could help activate the area is by having an, an open space that people want to go to. So I don't know exactly what that, where that location would be though.
I'm going to go back to the Ford site because I really think that the vision for that site around their public spaces is something that we should be looking at because when we look at a site by site basis, I think we get kind of a hodgepodge and not necessarily something that is cohesive and maybe draws people from one spot to another. So it's all well and good to be site by site. But I think if we really want to see open space and public space, we may have to put some, that's not my money, but I guess it's some of my money behind, behind it and really make it a destination. I think continuing on what they did at Bloomington Central Station and making that corridor of sorts or something that connects the mall to that area would be a smart thing to do. I don't necessarily think that you can make it sort of a green spine like we're talking about in Lyndale, Lyndale Avenue retrofit plan. But I like the vision of it. I like the idea of it. So I'm not in favor of sort of site by site basis. Commissioner Curry.
Thanks, Chair. Just even reducing the lane width or the, you know, these road widths and creating more green space along the sides of the roads, like 30th Avenue, looks like that's five lanes wide with a substation at one end, so there's never anybody there. And then the semiconductor plant at the other end of that. So again, just an idea, but maybe the roads are one place to start to create more open space.
Commissioner Cookedin.
I agree with Commissioner Curry on that. I know Ms. Long said they're designed that way for a reason, which I can appreciate. But, I mean, now some of these are developed. And so if you could put an easement there or something, so 50 years from now, we need to take that back and repave it, go for it. But, you know, you look at Bloomington Central Station and quite a bit of South Loop period, the, the developments there. And we've got some huge roads, man. That 30th Avenue is way too big. That's two lanes too big. And so, yeah, you could take some of that back and make it a green space, make it more walkable. Yeah, I'm in favor of that. As, as opposed to the pocket parks or whatever we're calling these things on the corners, I'm a little torn. I guess I would be okay if, you know, I think that's an interesting question. Should we just allow them to be developed instead of requiring some sort of open space there? If they're not being used. Yeah, I don't know. I mean, you look at that site and again, like, I don't know if any open space would have worked at that corner. And why didn't we just allow it to be developed? So I don't know. I could be convinced either way of it. I, I don't know if I have a strong opinion.
Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, Chair Albrecht, if I can just lend one, two small points to this is one thing that will help staff in the future as sites redevelop is, you know, we have the tool of park dedication. So for sites that are plating, the city has the option to require cash payments or land. And so getting some of this guidance in the district plan helps us have those conversations with the landowner as to what the city's clear expectation is. So hopefully that helps illuminate kind of why we're asking the question in addition to what some of the deficiencies of the existing spaces are that we see. The other pieces too is one thing to note is that, so these public spaces were intended to serve dual purpose. They were intended to be used by the public or available to the public, but also serve as gateways. And at this time, as Tom noted, you know, we didn't have creative placemaking staff. We didn't have staff who specialized in this specific area of expertise. One of the reasons we're listing on the slide from just a staff recommendation standpoint is that, I guess what I guess what we would emphasize the most is that if we want to create gateways for South Loop to make it much more iconic or unique to that area, we should tap into that expertise as opposed to have something so prescriptive in the district plan. So hopefully that just kind of says what's on the slide in a different way.
Commissioner Hookton.
Yeah, I think the last thing I'll say on this is, I've said it a million times up here, even including tonight. But South Loop's inherent problem, particularly as you go further east, is you're only there if you meant to go there. There's, no one's driving through unless they meant to go to the coffee shop or they're seeing somebody they know. But no one, even if you live in Bloomington, you're not going to this neighborhood unless you meant to. And so what can we do on twenty-fourth Avenue in particular, where there is general traffic, to draw them east to get into this neighborhood? So if there was some sort of a more, to your point, Commissioner Albrecht, more of a plan on twenty-fourth Avenue to say, hey, look, there's a bunch of cool stuff over here too. In a very coordinated, intentional effort, I would be in favor of that to try to draw people in to South Loop further east. Because that's the problem this neighborhood will always have is that there's just no drive-through traffic.
Does that give you enough guidance?
Yes, yes Chair, thank you.
All right.
So just to give you the opportunity to discuss any, I mean, this has been a pretty wide-ranging discussion. And you know, whether it's been related to the questions that staff has prepared or not. But giving you the opportunity to provide any other guidance that we can use as we go forward.
Commissioner Hookton.
Thanks ma'am Chair. Mr. Emerson, could you pull up Exhibit B again? Recognizing you in particular are not the right person to answer this question. But it is certainly curious to me as to why the trails don't connect from the, what we're calling here, the hogback ponds or the bass ponds. And you get into that sort of loopy part there that's under the airport safety zone. And they don't connect to where the trail is that's going to lead into the visitor's center. Why is that? Again, recognizing you don't work in Parks and Recreation.
Commissioner Chair, I believe that, that, that connection was studied. And there were a lot of difficulties in locating a trail within that. It's just not a very hospital, or it's not a very conducive topography to creating a trail connection between those two points. I think that was part of it. So there was a great amount of expense. And I think there was also some wetland areas too that would have complicated locating a trail in that section. So it was removed from consideration. I could get more, I could certainly get more information as to the reasoning behind it was, why that was removed. Because it was there in two thousand twelve in the, in that open space framework map, yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to see more of that as this comes back to us. To me, that even if it's difficult, man, to not have those connected seems wild to me. I know maybe you have to build pedestrian bridges and maybe it is really expensive. But like, I'd at least like to know, what is that? Is it, is it a million dollars? Is it ten million dollars? Like what, what would it take? Is it a federal variance? I don't, I don't know. But I would at least like to, to know what would it take? Because to me, that is, that is a huge disappointment if we can't get all that connected.
Any other comments, Commissioner Cookton?
Oh, I got more stuff if anyone. I would like us, and I, I need to be careful here because of my employer. I would like us to take another look at the northernmost parcel of the runway protection zone that is striped green and white here. It's my understanding, not professionally, more anecdotally, that there is more opportunities there than what we are using it for right now. I know nothing can be built there, but could it perhaps be a park? It, that's a huge parcel of land that is just fenced off and just sitting there empty. There's a lot of plane spotters out there and other people that would love to be in that park. Could we put a looping trail and some benches there and give a nice place for plane spotters? I think they would love that. And then it draws, there's like a, there's a huge aviation community that loves to just go out and take pictures of planes. And then they come here and then they go eat at our restaurants and and do other things. So I would like us to take another look at this and hope my employer doesn't watch the Bloomington Planning Commission meetings.
Commissioner Cunningham.
Thank you Chair. As someone who has a three-year-old who loves to go to the aircraft viewing area at M S P, I am in total favor of that. Because to Commissioner Cookton's point, I have gone to the Panda Express in Ridgefield by the aircraft viewing area. So why not use that unused, currently unused space as a way to get people to engage with South Loop?
I agree. I have a two and a half year old, so slightly younger, but she does love to look at planes. And we do frequent all of those restaurants over there just to grab something to sit in the parking lot and eat, so.
Commissioner Curry.
Thanks Chair. Yeah, just my last comment. I think last meeting, Chair Albrecht had a great idea in terms of just like, what was it? Like promoting food trucks once a month or something. I think it was your idea. I don't know. Somebody mentioned that. But like, if the city was to invest in the area in any way, maybe, you know, investing in a green space or a public space where you could then also, you know, have an attraction like that on a monthly basis. That, that would bring people in. I think that would be, you know, that'd be just a good way to knock out the green space and get some people in the area. So that's it.
Commissioner Isa, sorry, I missed your hand.
No worries. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Perfectly? Okay. No, I was just gonna add on. Most of the points I was gonna add on to, someone mentioned it. So I agree with a lot of the things that some of you guys said. Secondly, just the comment on the aircraft viewing area. I thought I was the only one who did that and I usually don't tell people, you know, I don't want people to think I'm weird or anything. But so it's good to know that. Other people do that as well. And I would be in support of having something like that. Yeah.
Commissioner McGovern.
Yeah, I, I mirror everyone's opinion on this. It's a great area. It's right in the zone. So let's take that into consideration and start really looking at it. Because there's, that piece of land alone has so much potential compared to what we've been talking about tonight. And, and I think we should really dig into that.
Commissioner Cookton.
Thanks ma'am Chair. I want to go back to the food truck thing. And so what makes me sad is that there are food trucks in that neighborhood on a weekly basis and you don't know about it. And so what are we doing wrong in not getting that word out? And there's plenty of space for a bunch of food trucks, like the, the road between the park and Bloomington Central Station and the Hyatt there could fit six food trucks. And there are certain days in the summertime where there are like four food trucks out there. And you're on the planning commission and don't know it. So it's as much of a question as what are we doing to get that word out as it is to provide a space for it.
Chair Albrecht, if I can speak to that comment, one thing I think that is very encouraging from the Port Authority is their robust growth in services and programming directed towards small business. So that's in my time at the city of Bloomington, I think that's the biggest shift, at least in the last five years, is trying to come up with more intentional and creative ways to support small business. So I'll say, I'll definitely share that feedback with Barb Wolf and the other folks in the port who are focused on, on those tasks.
Yeah, that, I, I'm now remembering that conversation about the food truck because I think I was talking about Portland and how they create almost a semi-permanent space for food trucks. So people know and they go there and there are restrooms and, I mean, like portable restrooms, but like picnic tables and things like that. So you're creating a space, even if it's not fully permanent. It's kind of a semi-permanent. I think the one that I went to was just in a parking lot. Then they transformed the parking lot into that food truck spot. And there were hundreds of people there. Commissioner Hookton, you want to say something?
Only ones are finished?
Yeah, go for it.
Okay, thank you. If I could ask, if Mr. Johnson or whoever's controlling the screens in front of us to pull the black box down so he can see the corner of the map there. I have, thank you, I have a question about how the trails work right where the cursor is now, at the top right. So another massive disappointment for me is that our trails do not connect to Fort Snelling. We are right there, but there's no path that goes down that really steep bluff to get to a whole nother network of trails that can take you all the way to downtown St. Paul. We're missing this tiny little chunk and I'm pretty sure that's on federal land. And so that's probably why it's stuck. But I would love to see the, the city advocate, if it's not our land, to get a trail connection. Because if you're exiting the city in this corner, your only option is to go on the four ninety-four, four ninety-four bridge, which is totally inhospitable, but you can't go down the bluff. And then there's this whole other network of trails that goes right into Fort Snelling State Park and you can't get there. The only way to get to Fort Snelling is you have to go up and through the airport and cross a bridge that has no pedestrian or bicycle crossing to get down into Fort Snelling. But we're right there. So I would love to see us advocate, if it's not our land, to get a connection to Fort Snell, those trails that are in Fort Snelling. We're really close. You just gotta get down like a hundred feet. And if the city wants more detail on what I'm trying to explain there, I'm more than happy to, to do that.
I'm curious on this map, there's the pink dotted outline, the redevelopment sites to include park or public recreation space. I think if what we're talking about, about the runway protection zone being some sort of destination, correct, connecting that in some sort of green spine of sorts to the Bloomington Central Station Park would be more impactful than trying to force park or public recreation potentially on either, any of that, those areas. It's just my initial thought. I think there's more potential making a shorter connection there of some kind than to try and hodgepodge something together. Where, whereas like Commissioner Cookton said, if we were to drive up density on some of those sites that are right now airport parking, we might be able to see more of a purposed or visioned green, green space. I, I like the green street idea, but I don't see that really connecting to Blue Cross, or sorry, Bloomington Central Station and or the runway protection though.
Chair, if I may, I think the, the L R T alignment, that might be just a mistake on my part where the symbology is overlapping. And so that, that green street concept would apply, I believe, from thirtieth to thirty-fourth in that gap. And I think they're just, I think the symbols are overlaid on top of each other. So hopefully that might address what you're concerned about. Or at least providing that correction to the map and how it's depicted, that's, that's on me. I recreated the map and so I, I might have.
Sure, sure, sure. Okay.
Yeah, I might have confused the symbology, so I apologize for that.
And if, if I may, Chair Albrecht and Tom can speak to this too, but one of the, I guess one of the wrinkles or changes to this updated map is that the existing district plan is very prescriptive about where on these sites. These sites currently have parks planned on them. And they also identify one of them as having, excuse me, having a playground specifically. And so I think one of the, the main change as shown here on this exhibit is just going to an approach that's a little bit more flexible. And I think coming out of the two thousand twenty-one Cities Park System Master Plan, you know, I think when, when you use the term parks and recreation, you know, say ten or twenty years ago, I think it takes on a very different meaning now as to how you can program or use different spaces for recreation. So I guess what I would encourage as part of this is thinking about it in such a way that it's not like ball fields. It's not typical playgrounds. It, it has more flexibility to kind of take on a program or facility that is more in alignment with South Loop. So I just wanted to make that point.
Commissioner Curry.
Thanks Chair. Yeah, I think, I mean, I think the, the trail aspect, just having, I'm trying to think of how to put this. Basically making this a space that, an area that's more accessible to active people would, instead of being, I mean, it's just really not connected to much, if anything at all. And perhaps whether it's trails to Fort Snelling or somehow connecting into routes that people take on road bikes, like anything to get people coming through on an active basis in the summertime, I think would be probably the best time, the best way to get people to come through the space or to come through the area and have a, like a notable park size rather than like, okay, this is kind of the corner of an apartment development or some little area that we have to dedicate to the city. But something that's like actually notable that people can congregate at and, and be active. I think that's, I mean, what you guys are talking about here and leveraging all of, you know, the natural beauty of the river and the bluffs and these trails around here is probably the, I don't know. I think that's just a good way to, to get people to have interest and draw people into the area.
Commissioner Cookton.
Ma'am Chair, I totally agree with Commissioner Curry. To me, the gem of this neighborhood is the bluff. What bothers me so much about Edina and like that huge tower they put up next to Target. Like, how is that more desirable than what we have, being next to this gorgeous bluff that is super unique to our location right here? And so part of the problem, and I've said this a million times up here, is that it's so hard to get down to that bluff. So like priority zero for me is getting these connections to the bluff done. And to me, that's just so critical to the health of what we're trying to accomplish here. And so, but yeah, celebrating the bluff and, like, I'm a lot more interested in making it easier to get down to the bluff from anywhere in South Loop than I am creating these sort of pocket parks on these parcels of land that are highlighted in pink. And I don't want to be like Mr. Anti-Park here, but like, I don't know if the, the adjoining lands just east of the mall there. Like, I don't know if I want to formally reserve part of that land for a park. That makes me nervous. Like, in my head, there are some very interesting things that could go on that piece of land that don't include a park. And I would not want to jeopardize future development. Like, I hate seeing that gigantic parking lot there. But we gotta reserve, we gotta be a little careful. And I would not want to formalize something that says there must be a park on this land and potentially jeopardize future development.
Commissioner Curry.
Thanks Chair, sorry. One last comment. Trails, the, you know, park space, all the natural aspects, that stuff that does not require market forces. Like, doesn't require market demand and investment and all that sort of thing. We just have, you just have to create, I think, create the trails and make it something that's, that's, I mean, it is a somewhat central location to the, to the metro area because you've got the four ninety-four bridge and you've got these, and a highway five bridge that go across to the east metro. So I think just making that connection is a great way to get some momentum there.
Commissioner McGovern.
I agree with both, that we could enhance the bluff area to connect the dots. Make the trails more visible, more walkable and bring in people this way. I like the idea of having the connection to Fort Snelling as I've taken that path, turned around and walked back. Something to really consider, being that Fort Snelling is a historical place. And it would also invite people that are at Fort Snelling to take that trail. take that trail and see what Bloomington has to offer.
Commissioner Curry.
Sure, sure. Thanks, Chair. In reality, we're really, it's really not that far from Minnehaw Falls, which is a huge congregation area in the summertime with road bikers and people just coming to the falls. So, I mean, it's really not that difficult to get from the falls to Fort Snelling. And if you can get from Fort Snelling down to the South Loop, I mean, that's just a connection to a lot of people.
Commissioner Cookton.
And thank you, ma'am Chair. You could imagine it being sort of the endpoint of your journey for that day, right? Like you're, you're doing all your biking, whatever, and like we'll end in Bloomington, get something to eat at the restaurant, the coffee shop, whatever, and then we'll turn around and go back. And so I just, I would love to get this connected to Fort Snelling. I do have another item if we're, or if we're ready?
Go for it.
Okay. I've said this before, but, and I don't know if it's appropriate because it's such a specific thing, but I would love to see a sidewalk on the west side of 34th Avenue, north of American Boulevard. There are a significant number of people that walk that site. So we're talking about Park and Go, the one on the northwest corner of that intersection. They walk the grassy bluff there where there's no sidewalk to get to Holiday because we have no food in my neighbor, in that neighborhood. And so to go to Holiday, instead of having to cross the giant road to get on the east side of 34th Avenue and then navigate that goofy intersection and then have to cross the road again, once you're on the other side of 494 to get to Holiday, they just cut across a very complicated interchange that is really dangerous. And so I would love to see us get a sidewalk connection on 34th Avenue north and then under the highway towards the airport.
Anything else? Commissioner Cookton.
Yeah, so I think I just have one other thing. And so not a big secret that I live in South Loop. And Wednesdays in my building happen to be Wine Wednesdays. And so there was a congregation of people in my building last night. And I thought, what better chance to do my public duty and ask some questions? So I brought down my big binder of, of plans in my iPad and just took a little informal poll of what people were, of what people were thinking. And so oddly enough, the, the one thing that got the most traction, because I asked, a lot of the questions were being asked tonight just to get the flavor of what people want. Do you want tall buildings? Do you not want tall buildings? Do you want parks? Do you not want parks? The one thing that got the most traction, and this is all anecdotal, but people wanted more quick service restaurants. I wasn't sure I would, I wasn't, I wasn't expecting to hear that. Because I think in Bloomington Central Station and this sort of neighborhood east of the mall, we've been very choosy to not settle, if you will. So I think we could have gotten a Starbucks to fill that coffee space years ago. But we let it sit empty until we got what we thought was the right one. And by we, I guess I mean the developer. And heck, I've said it myself tonight that we should wait and wait for the right thing. So I am, I am, I too am taking that path at times. But what I heard very clearly last night was there's no food around here. And wouldn't something like a Chipotle be amazing? And that was the only thing that I, I brought forward to this collection of people last night that got universal approval was a quick service restaurant. And so maybe my message to the developer who owns a significant amount of land in this area, along with the other developers who own land, is let's maybe open our minds a little bit and, and, and try some, something a little less cutesy than what we've been trying to do.
All right. Any other items for discussion? On this one? Okay.
Are you sure?
Any other questions for the commission?
Chair, no, that was all the questions we had and thank you for your time. Really appreciate it. A lot of good feedback. Very wide-ranging discussion, but it was really good. So thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Second item on our agenda this evening is the Planning Commission Policy and Issue Update. Planning Manager, oh, I apologize. For item one, that item is a study item at the City Council meeting on March 3rd, 2025. Item two, study item, Planning Commission Policy and Issue Update. Planning Manager Johnson, you have the update.
Thank you, Chair Albrecht. Also, I'll just provide a quick look ahead to the meetings planned in March of 2025. So March 6th, again, currently no items in the development queue. And I don't believe any long-range items will be coming forward, so that meeting is likely to be canceled. We'll send out confirmation of that the Thursday before the March 6th meeting. So that'll come to you next Thursday, but I anticipate that meeting is going to be canceled. March 20th, we have two applications in the queue. One is from Enclave Companies at 3901 Minnesota Drive. So that would involve rezoning and a preliminary development plan and a final development plan for a 275-unit mixed-use building with 5,000 square feet approximately of commercial space. I believe it's seven stories tall. And so that will be a public hearing on that one. The second application would be the public hearing for the Sign Code Look Back Ordinance. You recall, we had that lengthy study session where we went through a litany of different enhancements to that. So we'll bring that forward for a public hearing. And again, that's the March 20th meeting. On the March 27th meeting, we also have two items planned. One is the public hearing for the Co-Living SRO Ordinance. If you recall, we've had multiple study sessions on that. So we finally have a final ordinance, or a more polished ordinance to present to you in a public hearing setting there. And then a study item, some of tonight's discussion relates to this topic as well. And it's certainly a popular topic in real estate and development and planning and land use circles is office conversions. So staff will present our initial findings as part of completing that study and stand for questions that you might have and how it relates to our code. So those are the three meetings looking ahead. Again, March 6th, likely to be canceled. The other two meetings do have two items each currently planned for those agendas.
Any questions or items that the commission would like to discuss? All right. Seeing none, that will end our Thursday, February 20th, 2025, meeting of the Bloomington Planning Commission. Good night.